Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think, although it doesn't look as though we have nearly as many people who had registered and said they were coming, I think we need to get going because apparently there's another event immediately following us in this auditorium this evening, so we don't have that much time. Looking around, I'm wondering where all the keen students are, the ones that sit at the front of the auditorium when they're at university.
Well, there's an entire row of keen students right here.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Keith Ainsworth. I chair the board at REA and have done so for many years. And it's my pleasure to welcome you here this evening to hear about REA. Is there an echo or a boom on this? I have a screen full of controls here, but none of them says "Eliminate Echo", so maybe I'll stand back a bit, maybe it'll be a bit better. Tonight, we're going to give you an introduction into a lot of work that's been going on for the past year on the planning for REA's future. As Chair of the Board, when I look at what's been produced in the past year and I think back 14 years to the very beginning of REA, I'm pleased to say there are some similarities. There was a vision and a mission that we created 14 years ago that is not drastically dissimilar to what you'll be seeing this evening. That's the good news. And also good news is that when we first created that vision 14 years ago, we did so in much more of a vacuum. And what I mean by that is we really had not much idea as to what it would take to fulfill that vision. And hence, 14 years on, we've made significant progress, but it hasn't been as straightforward as we had imagined at the beginning. Ignoring the challenges that circumstances threw at us along the way, but just, I'm talking about just dealing with and putting into practice the vision, has been a lot more challenging than we imagined. Two reasons. One, because we didn't really understand what it would take to operationalize that vision, the skills it would take, the experience it would take, the resources it would take. And, not surprisingly, we didn't really fully understand how much it would cost. As Chair of REA, one of the things, or probably the thing, that occupies most of my thinking time with the organization is where is the money going to come from to continue the organization and continue to do the good work? Fortunately, for the past 14 years, those questions have been answered, sometimes only just in time, but that's fine, that's good. It allows us to continue to move forward. But as I stand here and look to the future, we still have that significant challenge. REA, as I've said many times before, is not a charity that is easily funded, not that any charity is really, but REA is especially challenging because it's what I think could be characterized as much more of a cerebral charity than most. It doesn't tug on many people's heartstrings. It's not the type of charity that, you know, you can do an appeal at Christmas time and you can get a surge in donations and support because of the time of the year and people's circumstances. It's much more a charity that appeals to people who are able to think conceptually and think long-term about what it means to support and to meet the need of a charity like REA. Fortunately, we have a good number of people in our community who manage to think like that, or do think like that. You among them are the ones who have helped to move REA forward and keep it going for 14 years. Hopefully, as we move forward, we can grow that group. You, through your discussions with your circles of friends and acquaintances, and then through theirs. We need to broaden the circle out and continue to build the support that REA enjoys. Hopefully, the work that you'll hear about this evening will be a good platform to help do that. So, with that pitch and that appeal to you to continue to sort of talk to friends and continue to try and help us raise money and do the good work that we're doing, I'll hand over now to our Executive Director, Stephanie. Now, Stephanie's been with us a comparatively short time, January last year. So, what, 15, 16 months? In that time, she has been doing an incredible amount of work to understand the organization and to start to chart a new course for it. And tonight, she's going to spend a little time telling you what the results of that is. But for those of you who don't know Stephanie, Stephanie is an internationally trained researcher in biodiversity and ecology. She got her PhD in Germany before coming to Canada and has done postdoctoral work both at Waterloo and at Western University. And I spent, I think, a year teaching at Ryerson as an assistant professor before taking the big plunge and joining us at REA. I remember well the interviews that I had with Stephanie, and I remember at one time sort of looking at her and saying, "Is there anything that scares you?" And she looked at me a little bit puzzled for a minute and said, "I haven't found anything yet." So, the next day, we offered her the job to see if we could scare her, and I'm pleased to say that so far, she has not confessed to being scared by REA, by the challenges, by the, you know, the charity itself and the work that has to be done. So, I'm pleased that she's with us and she's still, hopefully, excited and not scared with the organization. So, with that sort of rather strange introduction, I'll hand it over to Stephanie.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Well, I do have to admit, I am terrified of airplanes and of horses, but unfortunately, that's not something I usually encounter at REA, so I feel I am in a good place here. Well, good evening, everybody. First of all, I would like to extend a really warm welcome to everyone who made it out here tonight, and I am incredibly pleased that you all have gathered here with us to look at our plans going forward in our first-ever town hall meeting. So, we are delighted to have you here and to share a first glimpse of that document that will lead us and guide us through the next five years, our Strategy and Plans 2015 to 2019. Like our strategy and plans, you will see that this night will be all about conservation and connectivity. Thank you all for coming, and I'm glad that we got you all here before you take off to enjoy the long weekend later this week. And thank you all for being here tonight. It very clearly demonstrates just how important the work we do at REA is to you and to the community. So, in the following, I will update you a little bit, and I will walk you through some of our past accomplishments and introduce you to our strategy and planning process that we have undergone over the past year, and then also walk you through some select goals and strategies across all our departments. And I'm really particularly delighted tonight that it's not only going to be me speaking, but we have a really great lineup here for you. And I brought a small delegation of staff and volunteers with me who will give you their own glimpse and their own perspective on REA and on our planning efforts. So, please join me in welcoming Jenna Quinn, our program scientist sitting in the panel there. Jenna, if you would just quickly rise. Jenna is responsible for research partnerships, priorities, and monitoring. Thanks, Jenna. Then we have Garrett Kaminga, who is right here, and who has also brought three students of his who went through the programming at REA, and these are the young girls sitting in the front row here, namely Hazel Allen and Tatum Schooly and Kayla Martin. So, if you all quickly just want to rise and say hello to everyone. So, welcome you all. We also have Carly Pope here tonight, our junior conservation ecologist, who will speak a little bit about her path that led her to REA and her path at REA, and Patty Leather, who likely most of you already know because Patty is our staff with the longest tenure, and for over 10 years now, Patty has never gotten tired to be there for REA whenever we needed her for all our fundraising and communications and community relations needs. So, welcome everyone and welcome our great speakers here. So, once we finish walking you through our plans, there will be a brief period for questions and suggestions, and then we invite everyone to enjoin us for a short reception and a glass of wine, and we walk over to the gallery to do that. So, please note that there are also handouts available tonight, so everyone should have gotten one of these when you walked in. It's a two-piece handout, one booklet and a little insert, so you can use this insert to provide feedback before we solidify and formally launch our new official strategy and plans within the next few months. We also have additional paper available for you to write on. If the space is not enough for you, just raise your hand and someone will come and help you bring you more paper. Before we now really start, of course, I have to thank and really want to thank everyone who was involved to make this evening happen tonight. There were a lot of people working really hard over the past few weeks, in particular because I was on a prolonged trip to my native Germany and only came back one and a half weeks ago. So, thank you to Erica Casta and Cheyenne Richardson, who were really heavily involved to get the handout and all the communications going, Larry Chance and Claire Muster from the Manhattans in Guelph for being our volunteer servers later. And particularly, I would like to thank Joy Roberts, who is sitting in the audience here, and he is one of our long-term volunteers extraordinaire and who has not only provided a lot of support with the event organization, but who is also the generous donor of the wine we will all later enjoy. So, thank you, Joy, for making this happen. Also, John Bikers, graphic design professor at Conestoga College, helped us with the designing of the handout and generously volunteered his skills. And of course, we're most grateful to the School of Architecture, who, in particular, Eric Haldenby and the Art Gallery for hosting us tonight. And since I have everyone here, of course, we really need to keep in mind that REA would have never been possible in itself without our amazing founders. And we have Keith Ainsworth here tonight, which you have already met, and of course, his wife Sheila, who is sitting in the audience, and of course, also our founding members, Louis McCollum and Michael Bernstein up there in the back row. So, thank you so much for being the nuts and bolts of REA for over 10 years now. So, if everyone is ready now, let's start the fun part and move right into our presentation. And please join me now in the excitement to now present what so many people have worked on over the past year, our Strategy and Plans 2015 to 2019. So, let me start a little bit about what REA is all about and our past accomplishment. You will hear a little bit about our past today, but most of what you will hear is about our future and how we define community engagement at REA, and you will learn we actually define it very broadly. So, often you will hear that Waterloo region is a little bit of the donut hole in the map because there is no land trust there and this area is really not well-covered, but I can reassure you tonight, you're wrong, because since 2001, the REA Charitable Research Reserve is a community-driven 900-plus-acre urban land trust right situated here at the confluence of the Grand and Speed Rivers, which is where the original property is located. So, to give you a little bit of a better idea of what this looks like, I know a lot of you have been on the property. I'm not sure if everyone has seen a map just yet. So, this is our most recent map, and what you can see, everything that's in between the yellow lines is our current property. The Lemsin property is a little bit separate, which you see there under one, and was purchased later and now houses our main offices. The core property is everything you see within the yellow lines, but this little area here, the Thompson Track, which was purchased additionally in 2010. And you can see we have different facilities. I already mentioned the historic Lemsin was built in 1837, is most familiar to most people as Nicholas Tavern, which was very famous, or maybe I should rather say infamous, in Waterloo region. Leading back to our Mennonite history in the 1800s is the Eco Center, a now renovated historic Slid Barn and Farmhouse, and of course, for the past couple of years, we had the newest addition to REA, which is Northouse, which was a $4 million research investment right here at the University of Waterloo and the School of Architecture, and is an award-winning entry to the 2009 Solar Decathlon. And now, it's here at REA to provide the opportunity for cutting-edge engineering and technology research as a tangible way to let the community experience sustainable design and technology. So, it fits right into our alley as a research reserve. So, by focusing on conservation, and this of course includes land sequestration and ecological restoration, as well as research and education, we also provide wonderful passive opportunities for other recreational activities. So, REA really has become, over the past decades, a cornerstone of this community here. And as Keith has said so profoundly, the vision of the founders, the visions the founder had at day one is at its core really still intact, but of course, it has been enhanced to accommodate our growing need for an increased protection of ecosystems and biodiversity and all the lessons we learned over the past decade. And I have to tell you, for me personally, it's been a journey too, and I can really genuinely say, I couldn't wish for a better position to be in myself right now and for a better job for myself. As Keith has said, as a trained ecologist who has experienced both research and education from the inside, REA really resonates to me with its mission and its vision and with everyone, everything we do, because it's everything I feel personally passionate about as well. And it's really places and opportunities like REA that we can find here in Waterloo region that made me want to settle down here. And I can tell you, over the past 10 years myself, I have bounced from one place to another because that's usually what you do as a young researcher, and you come to a lot of tempting places, but Waterloo region really was for me the place where I wanted to be and raise my family for all the good places and things we have to do here such as REA. So, here at REA, we do research and education, and we do it to create a conservation mindset and to develop the new tools and the best practices that we can share with all conservation practitioners and also with the next generation of conservationists. And you will hear about that a lot more later when Garrett and our students are speaking here. Everything is connected, and I mean not only physically, of course, it's important to connect habitat, but everything is connected via people as well and via knowledge. So, what we foster here really at REA is our chain of learning. We do research to learn and understand the underlying science that can inform these best practices I was talking about, but we also perform experiments to test our understanding and to offer education and to train this next generation of people who will come after us. And I personally, and we all of us think, I think we all agree on this, we want our community, communities' children to have access not only to these spaces such as REA, but also to the brightest minds and to our scientists and artists, and we want these people to have access to the sense and creative wonder children still have about the natural world. But I can tell you, there's one thing we really don't want at all, and that is elitism, because we really very strongly believe that every one of us and everyone in this community is and can be a conservationist. So, our mission is to hold the reserves network of natural landscapes in trust as a common possession and to set it aside for the natural and heritage value and to provide unprecedented opportunities of engagement in this entire watershed, and in both, as well as ecological and cultural research or education and recreation. So, through the combined efforts of everyone that you see in the room here tonight, the community as well as REA's team of staff and advisors, we will together work on discovering these best practices and answers to environmental problems that concern us all and stewarding the diverse lands that we still have left in Waterloo region towards increased ecological integrity for future generations. So, this directly leads us to our enhanced vision, which is to offer the community, and this includes not only everyone here in the room, but the international community and future generations as well, a really diverse network of connected natural areas that are protected, intact, and in perpetuity. And growing into an international leader in conservation, research restoration, education, and all the other things we do, REA will really demonstrate leadership and serve as a model system to connect the link between ecological integrity and economic sustainability, which is really so critically important to create enhanced life for the entire planet. This being said, of course, it's not only the people who came out here tonight. We have really created many opportunities over the past decade to get people involved in many different ways. You already heard a little bit about programming, but we also have eight kilometers of trails, and based on trail counters and other estimates, we believe that we have up to 50,000 visits to REA per year. So, really, it shows you, it's a great impact that we are having, and there is a large proportion of the community that already enjoys REA's diverse properties in many different ways. So, going forward, we will certainly continue to invite you and everyone else to participate in all aspects of this organization, may it be conservation, may it be research, citizen science, may it be as an education volunteer or for other community activities, just coming out and enjoying a hike all by yourself. And just like this town hall meeting in itself, we want to have more opportunities to really directly interact and engage you. So, how did we get to this night? How did we get to our strategy and plans? Well, I can tell you, a lot of people have really worked very hard over the past year to make this happen. So, we started almost a year ago with three planning sessions that I conducted with staff, and I also had a volunteer working on preparing an environmental scan, because the last thing we wanted to do is duplicate any efforts that are already being done. We then proceeded to also have three planning sessions with board and our various committees and key other stakeholders from the communities, and also had a lot of one-on-one meeting with advisors and with other community members. So, that all culminated in a few ideas that came together, and we then conducted an online survey with 11 questions of all REA users and supporters that we sent out to our entire database of stakeholders and also distributed elsewhere online so that people could participate in it. So, overall, up to this point, around 200 people have already given their input on these plans, and today is the big community session where everyone else who we haven't captured yet has yet another chance to give their input here tonight. So, to just show you a few little highlights that came out of the survey, over around 100 people participated in our online survey, and as you can see in this graph here, we had a really broad range of participants, a wide variety of stakeholders, ranging from donors to volunteers to parents of students who use our education programming to researchers and other people who have no immediate association with any of our programs. And of course, what we asked people is, what we are doing is that important to you? Are we doing the right things? And it very clearly became apparent that yes, indeed it is, and that the vast majority of people really is strongly behind our existing programs. And in particular, as you can see on this graph here, 90% of the people feel very strongly about conservation of habitat and biodiversity and feel that this is a very important thing to do in this region here. We of course also asked them, "Well, are you satisfied with the way we're doing it?" And again, the overwhelming result was that yes, people are very satisfied with our programs, but what we also learned, not only are they very satisfied, but there are indeed a lot of programs, and these are all the orange bars that you see here, that people don't know enough about. So, we learned a bit of a lesson that we have to have room still for improvement of our communications to make sure that we tell people and are out interacting with people like we do here tonight, to make sure they know what is going on with our programs. And after we did all this, we had a bit of an idea of where we were headed and what our organizational goals for the next few years should be. So, we started to phrase these goals, which you are seeing here at the bottom of the slides, and asked people again, "How do you feel about these goals? Do you think these are important goals? Are we on the right track?" And again, the overwhelming majority of people responded, "Yes, we do think these goals are very important or important," and in particular, they said, "protecting ecosystems and their goods and services, the water and clean soil and air that we rely upon is really important to us." So, this being said, let me now quickly walk you through our organizational goals for the next five years. So, as you can see here, we really do want to continue and establish REA as a collaborative, multidisciplinary environmental institute, and we really want to ensure that all the property that we own and that we continue to acquire really will become a model of science-based conservation with a lot of ecosystems protected and connected throughout the watershed. And of course, we want to advance ecological integrity. We want these systems to stay healthy or to become healthy again if there is need for restoration, because in turn, it will increase the economic stability in Waterloo region by protecting the goods and services every one of us really so strongly depends upon, and our whole food system, our entire health and well-being in the region is depending on these things. So, to make that happen, we do think it's important to engage the entire watershed and the entire community here through education and stewardship and also research, while really fostering a broad understanding that goes beyond the watershed and the region on how to protect all ecosystems and their goods and services and not only just the ones we see here. And we really want to continue to grow our protected natural heritage, maybe acquiring more land, for example, while improving the financial stability and the operational excellence of this organization. So, to just quickly summarize this here, ecological integrity is really one of our core values, and we think that all land management and restoration opportunities that we do are also research opportunity, and of course, in research, there is always a learning opportunity. So, we really want to continue to create a really collaborative, multidisciplinary approach and become a leader and a model system for applied conservation science. So, to now switch over to talk about our different departments and the departmental goals, well, as you have learned from what I presented earlier, conservation is the nuts and bolts of what REA is doing. And what you can see here really is a place where the community can still come and get their hands dirty. In the past year alone, over 1,600 tree shrubs and other native plants were planted with the help of 160 volunteers, and we hope that we sure can increase this even more in future. So, our key goal is for conservation going forward in some of our strategies are to continue to maintain and restore and enhance the expanded habitat and the connectivity that we already see, but also creating other rare sites across the watershed. And of course, being so focused on research, we use science-based methods and really scientifically sound methods to turn our land management projects into research opportunities. We also want to continue to encourage sustainable farming methods with our remaining agricultural projects on the property, and of course, what is necessary if you own as much property as REA does is to have a master plan for lands and the facilities. We also want to continue to recruit new volunteers and community gardeners in particular, because of course, we have a lot of work to do here. We can't do it alone, we need everyone to help us. And we want to develop new financial strategies for paying for the original land base and also, of course, for future land acquisition and stewardship. And with this, I hand over to Jenna, who will quickly speak about our plans for research. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Great to see so many people out here tonight. I'm really honored to talk to you today about research at REA. Research is a principal pillar of REA, and it has been ingrained in our programs and approach to conservation since the very start. But it often happens behind the scenes, taking place in But it often happens behind the scenes, taking place in parts of the property not accessible to the community, or as a part of planning alongside with our education and stewardship actions. Through citizen science projects, community involvement in monitoring, newsletter articles, and public events and lectures, we work to introduce ongoing research to the community. Some of you may know the meaning behind our RARE logo. One green block, yeah, that's up there, one green block representing reserve and the protection that is provided within RARE, and another open white block that suggests research, that we are open to discovery. It's in our name, it's in our logo, and it's in everything we do. After purchasing the land in two thousand and two, RARE's first research project took place as part of an undergraduate thesis program out of the University of Waterloo. In two thousand and three, a long-term study with University of Guelph began and continues to progress today. Partnerships with the University of Waterloo and University of Guelph have been absolutely integral to RARE's research program, with thirty-seven of the fifty studies taking place at RARE on the property to date coming out of those two institutions. Continued support from these universities speaks to the research value RARE can offer and the limitless questions that can be posed. Now into our second decade of existence, our reach has grown, with researchers from Thunder Bay, Sudbury, Ottawa, London, Windsor, and more visiting RARE. We are well on our way to building wider awareness of the amazing opportunities for research right here in Waterloo region, and are on the cusp of some really exciting partnerships with new organizations and institutions. This year, RARE's, the RARE RBC Graduate Scholarship in Water Research brought in applications from all around Ontario, and even included an application from University of Saskatchewan. I think this really exemplifies the awareness of RARE, and the opportunities here are really growing, and people are starting to hear about us and hear what can happen here. A relaunch of our annual scholarship program will begin this fall, sponsored by the Age's Fund at the Cambridge North Humphreys Community Foundation, and it's one vehicle by which we'll be driving our own research agenda. We'll focus on questions of importance right here in Waterloo region, which are also transferable on a global scale. Four broad themes have been identified for this scholarship over the next five years, and they will promote RARE sites as a model for scientific-based conservation, and will advance scientific knowledge on some key issues in conservation, including global climate change, urbanization, biodiversity in human health, and science-based governance and policy development. While not obvious, I can stand here and tell you with confidence that opportunities to learn and research from this land are not overlooked. When one speaks of conservation, this includes the boundless opportunities to learn and apply that knowledge around the globe. The fifteen and growing publications of RARE, of research at RARE in peer-reviewed journals are testament to that growth. As we continue to foster and promote environmental research, we lead by example, incorporating research into our ongoing programs and management decisions. As we undertake important stewardship actions, such as a recently completed prescribed burn, we couple it with research, observing the progression and results, and making comparisons to an unburnt site, which can inform similar restoration projects happening elsewhere. While we consider various management options for a relatively recent wetland formed along Blair Road, we work with researchers from McMaster University, who are using novel drone technologies to analyze habitat and vegetation health and a pathway of expansion via soil wetness, and these help better inform our decision-making. As we observe bobolink take refuge in a hayfield at RARE, we work with researchers to better understand the needs of this species, how they use the landscape, and what it takes to create a sanctuary for these species at risk. These are just some examples of researcher engagement and management decision-making at RARE. As we foster a passion and responsibility for the environment in our youth and next generation of conservation leaders, we start our chain of learning with the foundation of scientific discovery and research with hands-on investigative programming. Working to make science less scary and more accessible is an important concept on the path to learning from the land and learning from one another to secure a healthy future for our planet. So as we move forward together, I hope you agree that these, oh, do I change this? Yeah. Oh, I hope you agree that these six goals and strategies will move us in the right direction. Increasing and driving multidisciplinary research at RARE and working with new partners and collaborators, working widely to remove barriers to research and communicate our results effectively, strengthening our chain of learning and our financial security, optimizing in-house monitoring and making better use of and sharing that data more widely, promoting green technology research with the Living Laboratory North House, and strengthening and expanding ties with the wider research community. We're well on our way, and with the support, guidance, and interest of the community behind us, we can together be the change-makers and help our environment thrive as a model for others.
Thank you, Jenna. And now we segue right into our education programming, and I have Garrett Kaminga here speaking as our senior educator. Thank you.
Okay. I'm very, very happy to be here with everyone. As I walked up, I feel my special guests get a little tense. You're gonna do a great job whenever comes up, you have nothing to worry about. Just to start off, I thought we'd go over our educational programming title, which is Every Child Outdoors or ECO. Now, what we feel is the basis of this title is to provide opportunities for all to experience nature and hands-on scientific inquiry, so all young learners can protect what they know. We feel to really influence and create the next level of conservationists, they have to really know what they are trying to protect, and that is really our ultimate goal as Every Child Outdoors program progresses. Now, one of the main tools or models we use for Every Child Outdoors is the Chain of Learning, as we've heard about already. And the Chain of Learning allows learners of all ages to experience the ecological significance of the reserve and participate in the flow of environmental discovery. So that's really the ultimate goal of school programming, our camps and community programs as well. Our school programming is really designed to fill in the gaps of environmental education that exists in the school, in the classrooms of junior kindergartens all the way to grade twelve. With our growing network of sites, we hope to be a place where everyone is encouraged to ask the hard questions that have to be asked. We are really hoping that when everyone comes to RARE for any type of program, that they are really acting as a researcher. They are here to ask questions, they are here to really determine, discover why this land is important to protect, and that is how we are kind of hoping to create that next level of, next generation of researchers, land stewards, and conservationists at least. We truly believe that the seeds of environmental responsibility should be planted early to promote sustainable economic development and create the next generation. Planting those seeds early through inquiry-based programming is really something that can be fostered as they grow older. We feel that through community events, school programming, our extensive trail network, we hope to get all children outdoors, whether at RARE or at their own communities. And that is something that our large trail network tends to offer that we often overlook, even the passive recreation of walking on our trails, seeing our wildlife, seeing our plants, seeing our natural landscape. It's something that can really affect someone and really change their perspective on the world, especially as a young learner, and it's something that they can do without us even being there as educators, if they're on the property on their own. I'm truly fortunate to witness this interaction firsthand as an educator at RARE. I have had the misfortune, I would say, of having school programs come through the property containing students who have actually never been in a forest before, let alone on a trail, something we're really hoping to eliminate, hoping to really spread through the school board, and hopefully that is something that becomes more readily available to them. Now, as we move on, we're gonna go through some of our goals and strategies as an educational department. First of all, we want to spread the movement across the Grand River watershed. We want to spread that movement by fostering environmentally responsible citizens through ongoing and repeated engagement of students as they progress through the school system. So we don't want to capture students as they're coming through once or twice, coming through just through our summer camp or just from a community event. We are hoping that when they come to RARE for the first time, we are connecting them through the network of other programming we offer, and they become more involved. And we'll learn and hear a bit about that from some of our special guests in a moment. We are trying to encourage teachers to really be positive role models of stewardship for future conservationists. That's our second, train the trainer and peer-to-peer approaches to increase teacher engagement. We wish to accomplish this by hosting workshops and resources to ensure this continuity and increasing our relationship with the ETFO, the OSSTF, and the Council of Outdoor Educators of Ontario, among other organizations. We often experience school programs, teachers that we talk to and communicate with, they often are intimidated by being outdoors. So we are hoping to change that, educate teachers of how you can teach outdoor education, how you can kind of foster that interest, and hopefully they can spread it into their own classrooms and across the school boards. Number three, we want to liaise at a provincial level to promote outdoor environmental education within the ministry. We want to strengthen our link to the school boards, to the ministry curricular needs to kind of close those gaps that currently exist in the environmental education sector. We want to broaden our, expand our programs to include specialized learning opportunities for undeserved, underserved, underserved, groups and adults. We hope to do that by increasing our mirrored research programs, different grades, including, expanding our mirrored research programs for North House, bird monitoring, and really creating more programs that are really research-based, that allow, it's almost like, our mirrored research programs are almost like a researcher fantasy camp. Students get to come to RARE, use the equipment, use the methods, and we hope to broaden that to include a larger age bracket, to really go through those research methods. We also want to use new research projects to keep educational modules current and relevant while translating results into easily understandable information for the general public. And this is done by continuing our close relationship with our onsite researchers to develop educational modules that reflect the science that is really being performed at RARE, and continue that connection and strengthen that connection as time goes on. Now, we have many programs that go on throughout the year. We've just started, we just started kindergarten programming within the last year, and we hope to continue strengthening that bond as kindergartners have really been very popular. We've had lots of kindergarten groups through, and it's something that's really interesting to see, they have that really level of connection, they have a natural connection to the landscape, and we hope to strengthen that and keep that going as we go on. We also hope, as I said before, we hope to, we hope to inspire our future land stewards, as Carly Pope will be up here soon, she's gonna speak a little bit more about having people on the property and actually planting and showing how we can be land stewards, how we can help the land, and how we can move forward in the future. We also have just started winter programming in the last few years, which has been a huge help. We want to make sure people know that the property isn't just here in the spring and summer and fall. We want to show people that you can go out, you can wear equipment, you can wear snowshoes, you can be out on the property year-round, because there is significance in the winter. There are things to learn, there is big changes on the landscape, and our winter programming, which has about doubled in size since we started in twenty thirteen, or twenty fourteen, this past year, twenty fifteen, we have doubled our amount of students we've come through, and is a very good sign for our winter programming as well. Now, again, I spoke on our mirrored research programming. We currently have mirrored research programs in butterflies, salamanders, forest health, as well as benthic invertebrates, and we're hoping to expand that through North House and bird monitoring as well. Now, we are gonna introduce Hazel Allen, who is an eight-year-old ECO camper who has been at RARE the last few years, she's an ECO camp expert, and at her last birthday, she actually dedicated some of her birthday gifts to RARE, so she's a very close supporter. And if you want to come up, I'll get the microphone ready for you. She's gonna speak a little bit about her experience at ECO camp.
Into the spotlight.
Some of the things that I love to do at RARE ECO camp are walking on the trail to see the limestone cliffs. The rocks that make up the limestone cliffs are over two million years old. Two, I love to hike in the Indian Ocean. Some of the oldest trees and rivers probably are down in the Indian Ocean. Three, I love to look under the sinkboards. You never know what you might find under the sinkboards besides lakes. Four, I like the frog catching at the pond. There are some really big frogs, and I like to learn the different types there are. Five, March Day Camp is a lot of fun, because I get to see where and witness it. Last year, we went having it on your team. Six, I like to hear the four legends of our RARE property. I have heard that a few times, so I like to collect the camp data and read the stories. I love going to those camps.
Thank you so much, Hazel. That was fabulous.
Thank you very much, Hazel. That was great. I'm glad you're there, correct me at camp as well, it's always helpful. Okay, our next, our next special speaker is Tatum Schooly, who is actually an ECO camper who has become a volunteer, and she's gonna speak a little bit without transition. So you can come up. Thank you very much for coming. You want to use this microphone or this one?
All right. I've been going to ECO camp since before I can remember. It's always been such a magical place for me, just 'cause all the things you get to see. I live fairly close to the nature reserve, all the land, so driving to and from school, I've seen deer, we've seen random turkeys everywhere. It's really wonderful just to get to see all the nature, like, there's only so much you can learn in a classroom. You can learn math and science and all of these skills, but some things you have to learn out in the environment. And I think it's very important to just everyone that we get to teach young people about the land, because some people who live in the city, they haven't seen forests before, and it's really just such a wonderful place to go and see. I really loved it, and I remember the feeling as a kid of walking into the forest and seeing birds or squirrels or finding tracks in the snow. And it's such a rush to get to see all these things, and as a volunteer for the camps, it's very, it's beautiful watching the younger kids seeing the same things I felt in them, just seeing their faces light up in delight as they find something beautiful on the ground. All the wonder in their eyes is just magnificent, but thank you.
Well, thank you, that was wonderful.
Thank you very much, Tatum. That's very great. Our last guest is Kayla Martin, who is actually an Eastwood Collegiate Institute co-op student we had this past winter, and she has also transitioned into volunteer. So you can come up. Thank you very much.
All right, so as Garrett mentioned, my name's Kayla Martin, and I was a co-op student at RARE from September to January. I was mainly involved with the outdoor education program, so I would help Garrett when the school groups came to do their programs. I had the opportunity to help develop some of the programs, as well as present the programs to the students. And through this experience, I learned that outdoor education is very important, and I think RARE is doing a very good job with developing and implementing outdoor education programs that connect what the students learn in the classroom to the local landscape. I noticed that the students seemed to appreciate what they had learned in class a lot more when they could see its importance and its relevance in the local environment. But the students visiting RARE were not the only ones to learn and gain experience. Completing my co-op term there allowed me to gain some valuable experience as well. Along with helping with outdoor education, I had opportunities to help with some of RARE's other work, such as ecological monitoring. And having the opportunity to do my co-op term at RARE was very useful for me. It helped influence my decision to go on and study environmental science in university and try to volunteer at RARE whenever I can. So in conclusion, RARE provides valuable opportunities for young people, whether it's an elementary student visiting with their class, or a high school co-op student like myself, to get involved in the environment and the local community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kayla. Thank you, Hazel, and thank you, Tatum. It's very special of you to come out today, I really appreciate it. So before we introduce our next speaker, a connection really is that our further extension of the Chain of Learning is that RARE accommodates a large internship program with up to four positions a year, amongst other university placements as well. amongst other university placements as well. RARE is a place where real-world application can be gained, often leading to future employment in their desired field. I want to welcome Carly Pope up as someone who has made the move from intern to staff at RARE.
Thank you, Garrett. As you know, I've been told several times, I'm Carly Pope. I am RARE's junior conservation ecologist. I studied environment and resource studies at the University of Waterloo, where I completed a senior honors thesis under the guidance of Dr. Stephen Murphy, professor and chair of Environment and Resource Studies Department, editor-in-chief for Restoration Ecology, director for Ecosystem Resilience and Adaptation, chair for the Centre of Applied Science in Ontario Protected Areas, and a member of the Environmental and Research Advisory Committees at RARE. It was in his second year Restoration Ecology course that first inspired me to pursue a rewarding career in ecological restoration. As a new graduate, I was and continue to be eager to gain experience whenever possible. I was lucky enough to find the RARE Charitable Research Reserve in my hometown of Waterloo region, a not always easy task for a young conservation professional. I started as an ecological monitoring intern, where I not only used the knowledge that I had learned from my time at university, but was also challenged to learn new technical skills, like invasive species management, as is demonstrated in this lovely photo here, and monitoring protocol development, as well as transferable skills, employable skills like the time management, budgeting, and public communications. One of the best parts about working at RARE is that I feel they've invested in my career development. My ecological monitoring internship lasted six months, and then I had a month of job searching. And then after that, I was contacted by Stephanie and offered another contract position, and eventually a full-time position as the junior conservation ecologist. Throughout this entire learning experience, RARE took the time to guide me towards becoming a conservation practitioner, for which I'm internally grateful. Now, working in the land management department at RARE with a strong focus on ecological restoration, a field for which I've always wanted to work, I can't help but feel lucky to be on the ground floor at an organization making an impact in my local community. I received invaluable support from the staff at RARE, the local businesses like King Tree, and my community to get where I am today. The RARE Charitable Research Reserve has given me a great start in my career and has inspired me to take on a life of environmental stewardship and give back to the community that has already provided me with so many opportunities. Here, I know I'm making a difference in my community and investing in my future in conservation. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. You were really fabulous.
So I'm just going to skip briefly over this because we're quickly running out of time and have to be out of this room by seven. And you can all read it in your handouts as well, but let me reassure you. We have also put thought into how we can improve our management towards a sustainable future for this organization and have formulated a whole wide variety of operational goals and strategies. But let us speak a little bit more, and now I'm asking Patty to take the stage here to speak about how we are rooted in our communities.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for being here. It's really great to see so many familiar faces. It's equally as exciting to see so many new faces for me, which is not something I'm accustomed to at RARE. So it's wonderful. I am the official last speaker. Stephanie will wrap things up in a minute. So I'll try and move quickly so we leave lots of times, lots of time for questions. I'd like to talk a bit about a natural investment. What does it mean to have a 900-acre land trust in the midst of a fast-growing urban center for our environment, our health, our economy, and our future? These are the big questions that we try to articulate to our constituents every day. These are the sorts of things our supporters consider when deciding to lend their support. Several years ago, we launched a $17 million capital campaign to save and restore these lands, to preserve natural and built heritage, to be an incubator of and source for environmental science, and to engage the public in all matters of RARE, beginning with our chain of learning and including our nature programs, community gardens, trails, arts projects, and so on. To date, more than 2,000 donors have contributed $13.6 million and have made a natural investment. This signals to us that RARE is important to many, many people in our community and abroad, even far international reaches. For example, we have a donor in California who reached out to us, and he decided to become involved because of Severn Kull Suzuki's involvement here at RARE as an international ambassador. He was remarked by her own conservation and environmental efforts. And this year, for the first time, we are receiving funding from the German government, and not just because Stephanie's from Germany, to fund a German research intern, which is usually reserved for accredited universities and international nonprofit research institutions. The organization is important to each of those individuals or organizations for very different reasons, but nonetheless important for its work. So how do I change? As a charity, we are highly dependent on our community, our politicians, and our community leaders for moral, political, and financial support. It is no small feat to be as far as we are with this, our first campaign. And I would like to highlight just a little bit of what's been raised and from where. As you see from the graph on the screen, 90% of our revenue has come from donations and grants. The major sectors included in this category are individuals, foundations, and corporations, with individuals giving the bulk of those funds. These gifts come in all sizes, from the unrestricted $10 a month gifts in our Bedrock Club to the $100 annual gifts accumulating over time to become members of our ambassador circle, or to the one-time targeted major gifts to the campaign. Interestingly, the balance of the 10% that's left is shared almost evenly between government support and from the programming revenue we generate. This tells me a couple of things. First, we need to continue building our government support at all levels, municipal, regional, provincial, and federal. Second, it demonstrates our commitment to maintaining accessible access to the land and programs for all, regardless of one's ability to pay. And third, that our community, all of you, are our stakeholders, and we must continue to keep you engaged and to hear from you regularly. So of course, there's always the other side of the revenue, which is the expense side. And every year, RARE undertakes an audit, and we work to produce financial statements, and we aim to be accountable to our stakeholders in our community and to be transparent about our spending and our projects. Again, if you just refer to this screen, over 50% of all of expenses went direct to conservation and land management efforts and related public programming. Another 25% was spent to build, maintain, or improve capital infrastructure necessary to undertake the just-mentioned conservation and programming efforts. Things like our Eco Center, the Spring Bank Pavilion, trail signage, North House, the new laboratory classroom, and et cetera. Our fundraising and community outreach are lumped here, shown under our Development and Community Relations, and that accounts for 11% of our spending, while our overall administration cost sits at about 8%. And I know that these are pretty typical numbers for individuals and companies when they're sort of evaluating a charity's fiscal responsibility and accountabilities. So I thought I'd point those out. Following in line with the financial overview, it's important for us to remark that continuing to build a sustainable, a sustainable financial future for the organization is critical and a key goal across the organization, and in particular, the fundraising department. Our belief is that to do this, it requires a dedicated effort in communications to broaden even further our far-reaching base of support. To achieve this, we must ensure that RARE is known in the community, that it is well-understood, a well-understood household name in this region and within the entire Grand River watershed. Being well-understood means that both academia and the public, the lay world, recognize RARE as a leader in the environment, a prominent figure in both environment and conservation and research. And that we hope through a Faces of RARE campaign, where we identify and share the wonderful stories of the many people who are engaged, that you might see yourself in one of those faces. For example, Hazel, who's one of the faces of RARE and is here with us tonight. And I should mention that Hazel has a photo board that she's prepared, and it's upstairs and will be available during the reception, if you'd like to take a look. And so I ask each of you to consider, what is RARE to you? When you leave tonight, in the handout, there's that pull-out section, and it asks, what is RARE to you? Please take some time to complete it, along with the evaluation form, and send it back to us. Consider why you are here tonight. Consider why you are part of a conservation organization, even if it's not this one. Why do you volunteer, walk the trails, monitor birds, help fundraise, plant trees, or garden here? Maybe you have a favorite aspect of RARE. What is that? Please tell us. What would motivate you to deepen your involvement or share RARE with a friend or a colleague? For me, I'll never forget the first time I saw a bald eagle fly closely overhead. But it's seeing the love of nature, especially bugs, unfortunately, that my daughter has, which is truly, truly wonderful. And I know that I have had, through my work at RARE, an impact on that. As you look at the map today, it's sort of another view of it. We've placed RARE in our local context and highlighted it for you. Already, 42% of our lands are paid for with community support. The Thompson tract and the Lambsen properties are paid in full, and we've made a good dent on the original property as well. But to be truly intact in perpetuity and to fulfill the promise of sharing ecological integrity and these natural habitats with and for future generations, we have to complete this effort. We have a community initiative to turn the map green. For as little as $2 a square meter, you can help preserve a piece of RARE forever. It's simple, affordable, easy. Anyone, even schoolchildren, could participate. You can decide to do one square or many squares. You can choose to preserve square meters within the Old Grove Forests, along the limestone cliffs, in areas where we monitor butterflies or salamanders, in restoring agricultural fields, or in the cold water streams. After the presentation and the question-and-answer period tonight, there are opportunities for your participation in the foyer. Please take a minute, stop, and tell us, what is RARE to you? Become a face for RARE. Be part of a social movement to document what this place is to you and to others. Write it on the board, let us take a snapshot, and be part of our print and online campaign for the Faces of RARE. And then, should you decide, help turn the map green by preserving your square tonight. There is a quote in the handout from David Suzuki about science's hope. At RARE, we continue to support science and share that hope with our community. And for us, our supporters are our hope. So thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And now, we're quickly approaching the end of our presentations, and I really want to take the time to thank every one of you again for being here tonight and to thank every one of you for being RARE. I'm so incredibly proud of everyone and of all of us who are making this project happening. And I can't help and stand here but wonder, if we do this again, this exact event, five years from now, where are we going to be? And I personally, I want to see this hall here bursting with people, and I want to see this map Patty has just sewn, I want to see it green. And not only do I want to see this map green, I want to see the map of the region even greener with RARE all over it and with Conservation and Connectivity all over it. So if you do want to give us feedback, as I said in the beginning, there's opportunity to do so using the forms that we handed out. There's also additional paper if you raise your hand. As we are quickly running out of time, or if you're feeling uncomfortable giving personal feedback in a discussion right now, we will also make everything available online, and there will be an online form as well that you can fill out within the next couple of days. So once after we have a brief period of questions and discussions, we will proceed to celebrate at the art gallery. And with this, I thank you, and the panel is now open for questions. Thank you. Any questions, ideas, comments, concerns?
Did we inspire you, or did you just think?
Stephanie, you mentioned earlier approximately about 50,000 annual visitors and as the REEGE grows and as the number of visitors were increased, that number will probably increase significantly over the coming years. Are you comfortable with the balance between increasing numbers of visitors and protecting the sensitive landscapes? Do you think you can be comfortable?
Yeah, I think it's really important that going forward, as we have presented earlier, that a master plan of the property will be created so that we can be really sure we are funneling any public traffic towards the areas that are less sensitive and that can be explored more safely for both people and the environment. Whereas there will always be areas of our property that we own that will be off-limits and that people will not be able to enjoy personally by being there, but hopefully by being in other areas, they will still understand why these areas need to be protected, and they will be willing to protect them even without ever personally setting foot into them. Yeah. There's another question over there.
Just added one to that. It seems to me that in the local region, the school boards have specific lands that they have set aside, are funding, and are taking students to on a regular basis. Is there any thought to actually allowing them to get those off to their foundations and using the RARE lands to draw those students to the common areas of RARE as opposed to the budgets that they are being squeezed on by the school boards for outdoor education?
Yeah, we are certainly hoping that we can increase the number of students that can see the property, or that we can increase our program in a way that we, I always call it "RARE in a Box," bring the education programming to their communities and to their local parks and the local schoolyards, and show people how to experience nature there as well, which will also help with the overall problem. That there's always going to be a certain capacity that is being reached without increasing our capacity on staff even further and increasing our budgets even further as well. But this being said, we're already working really closely with both the public school board and the Catholic school board as well, and we're certainly hoping that we can increase that partnership in the future.
And just to quickly add to that, we've had meetings with both of the school boards in this area, and the addition of North House will add tremendously to that relationship. Both are in need of opportunities for science and technology field trips in a more local venue. And so we're eager to build upon the work that we're doing in education at North House. And thankfully, TD Bank has just supported us with a grant to increase that. So I think there's another component of what we're adding to the school board.
Yes, Andrew, please.
Yeah, just a curiosity, has your audience changed since RARE was started? Has your focus on any specific groups sort of altered from what the original market was of your original audience? Or is it sort of the same? Because it seems to be like everybody, which is mine.
Yeah, I think the goal has always been to include the entire community as closely as possible. It has always been part of the mission and vision statement as well, to include the community, not only the local community, but the international community. community, not only the local community, but the international community and future generations, and people who don't even live in the region as well. Because quite frankly, conservation and the protection of biodiversity and ecosystems, it is everyone's problem. It's not always obvious to everyone, and there's a lot of education work to do, and RARE can be, part of the role of RARE is to give people this learning opportunity and to make people relate to that, and to make people understand, yes, climate change is actually happening, and there's a lot of, we can hopefully do all together to ameliorate those effects, so, yeah. Any more questions?
If I can just add to that as well, the vision of the property, even before RARE was involved, when the property was willed to the University of Guelph back in the early 70s, there was already this vision of a green space that's protected in perpetuity for, you know, future generations to enjoy. So, we're very happy to encourage that vision, but it really started before us, this property kind of, its destiny was for that to be the case.
And it is, and it is for everybody, you're quite right. But, there's no mistake that we do focus so much of our energies on every child outdoors and young people, and I think, you know, we've spent a significant amount of our time and resources focusing in on that segment of our population.
Because as Garrett has said, you have to catch them early, because they are the next generation, and it's really important to keep on fostering that inspiration young children usually have. I always like to say, everyone is born as a scientist, because children always ask questions, they are curious, they like getting dirty, they like poking around outside and looking at bugs and everything. But then, over time, there are so many distractions, so many other things, it just falls by the wayside, and it's just so important if we do want to save our planet for future generations, we have to start making it happen, and we have to start at an early age to get our children towards understanding that and towards being good stewards of the lands and our resources.
Another, another point of clarity from my point of view, I don't know if the schools actually pay to come to RARE. If they don't, that's wonderful for them, but it's probably an opportunity to have every student buy one or two metres of greening the, greening the lands as a very small contribution to their participation in the property. Again, I don't know whether they pay now or not.
Yeah, the students do pay a nominal fee to participate, paid in the programming, which is currently $8. Then, of course, busing costs are in addition. But however, we do have certain funds that we can provide to students in needs or to schools from areas where there are really low income levels. But we have, we have discussed a lot, and what price point should we, should we start this Turn the Map Green campaign? And we really chose the $2 per square metre for a reason, because it really demonstrates our inclusiveness, and we want everyone to be able to have ownership of this and to be able to afford this. Because as we have seen when Hazel was speaking here, young kids can be, can be so generous, and they get it. She dedicated her birthday gift to RARE as an eight-year-old child. We had another group from a Catholic school coming out last year, who were so inspired by the programming and by being on the property, they fundraised at their school and they donated $80 to RARE, which I think is amazing, and it really shows that what we can do as a community and what we can teach our children goes so far beyond just the environment or ecology, it's a whole social movement as well, and it should be.
I'm just wondering what the vision is for the future of RARE in terms of the arts. I know that for the past ten years or so, they've been quite a lot of our participation in the community. I'm just wondering if you have that in mind.
Yeah, we're certainly planning on continuing to do that, because in my opinion, art and science is nothing separate, it's very closely interwoven, and art in itself is a very good way to communicate how we experience the environment and how important the environment is, and there are very close, close parallels, in my opinion. So, going forward, we certainly want to continue with the writer-in-residence programme at North House, for example. We have now applied for a grant as well to have a visual artist in residence as well, and I do hope that by working together with different other community organisations, organisations such as Musa Getis and other organisations as well, we can continue to have collaborative, multidisciplinary projects that really bring art and science together at RARE.
And we continue to have community events that incorporate the arts. We had a photography class just this week where people can come out. It's really about everyone finding their connection with nature. So if that's taking pictures, if that's birdwatching, if that's painting, we want to be able to offer all of those opportunities, so every individual has that, that personal connection with the land.
Stephanie, the Conservation Community of Ontario has been represented, and well-represented, I might add, by the Federation of Ontario Naturalists, which now call themselves Ontario Nature. I'm wondering if you could comment about the relationship that RARE hopes to establish with this group, because it represents an umbrella, it's an umbrella group of all of the conservation and naturalist groups throughout the entire province.
Yeah, we certainly hope that we can continue to grow and build that relationship, as well as the relationship with other conservation organisations across the province and even further, and the naturalist clubs as well. Just to give you an example, this year, for the first time ever, Ontario Nature is hosting their annual general meeting at RARE as a joint event, together with our research forum, so Jenna can tell you everything about it, because she has really been frantically working on organising this. And that's certainly the type of engagement and the type of collaboration and partnership that we would like to continue to see, because we're all working towards the same goals of conservation, and there's really power in numbers, and together, I think we can be really strong in accomplishing our goals.
Yeah, we've had the, we're a member of Ontario Nature, and as well, their executive director and some of their staff have come out and visited RARE, and we're really excited for the event on May 23rd, where we'll host their AGM, and it's more than an AGM, it's also an annual gathering. They invite all their members to come and see a location that they've identified as somewhere special that's worth seeing, and they chose RARE this year, and that's a really great opportunity. We're expecting 180 people. So, you know, some of those people will already be friends of RARE, but a lot of those people will be nature lovers that maybe haven't seen RARE before. We're exposing people to a gem they may have never heard of or seen. So it's going to be a really great event, I know it will be, and it's, in addition, an opportunity for us to, again, share the research focus at RARE. We're having a lot of researchers out to lead a variety of workshops and to have booths and displays to talk about their research. We have a new barn swallow project on our property. Those researchers will be there, talking about, about their work and what their plans are, and how it ties into a wider conservation movement across the province. So it's a really great platform to, to kick off our relationship with Ontario Nature, which will hopefully just only grow moving forward.
Yeah, I'm personally really excited to grow our relationship with the naturalist groups, because I think they can be a really strong ally to reach our goal to train the next generation of conservationists, which also will be the next generation of naturalists. And as, unfortunately, no offence, Bill, but a lot of the naturalists we work with right now are aging. We do need to train our next generation to ensure that all the good work that is currently being done by seniors at RARE will continue to be done 10, 30, 20, whatever, 100 years from now, and that's really important. And the universities, unfortunately, don't do such a great job anymore in giving students a good traditional biological education. A lot of it is focused on, on the more modern science of genetics and all these things. So it's really important that, as a community, we pertain this knowledge and continue to train people.
Stephanie, we'd like to have time for just one more question.
Yeah, one more question?
We're quite new to the community, and I'm always surprised when I tell people about RARE, how people don't know what it is or where it is. And these are people that have lived in this community for a long time, and that surprises me. So I'm just wondering, is it, is it the, maybe, maybe it's not written about in our paper, or signage, or what is it that people don't know? I have kids at school, how do you think it will work?
Yeah, it takes a lot of manpower and time and effort to make people know about us, because they, they tend to not necessarily come and seek it out in itself unless it's broadly advertised. So one of our goals for the next five years is really to make RARE a household name, and we're really gonna increase all our efforts to, to continue to write newspaper articles and to really be out there, make sure we are known, make sure our programs and our importance is being known in the community.
I do think it's getting better. I've been at RARE three years now, and when I started at RARE, it was the basically only question I ever got asked, what is RARE? What does that mean? Where is that? What does it stand for? It was always the question asked when we're out in the community, and it is, it is changing. When we're out working at booths or fairs or at community events, we do, I always start by saying, "Have you heard of RARE before?" And more and more, I'm getting the answer, "Yes, we love RARE, we use your trails", or "Yes, tell me more". So, it is, awareness is absolutely a challenge, and if you talk to, we're a part of the Water Region Environmental Network, and we've had conversations with those other members, and every single person will identify awareness as one of their biggest challenges. So it's ongoing, I don't think it will ever not be something we deal with, but I am, you know, I do feel like we're moving in the right direction, and less and less I have to answer that question, so that's promising.
Yeah, I think staff and volunteers have really realised that raising awareness for RARE and being a RARE brand ambassador is really everyone's job, and as long as we can keep that in our minds, the easier it is for us. And with this, I thank you so much for all your questions, I welcome your feedback, we will all notify you as soon as, as the online forum goes live as well. And now I really welcome you to come and join me to celebrate. Thank you.